I'm gonna go ahead and call us to order now at eight oh four P M Eastern. And Madam Secretary, uh, when you're ready, if you don't mind doing roll call attendance.
Sure, just one moment. Ms. McCardle?
Present.
Mister Watkins?
Here.
Mister Hegopian? Okay, I'm noting him as absent. Just give me one moment. I am pres- are you, is Mister Hegopian here? Okay, I am present. Mister Blankenship?
I'm here.
Mister Bowen?
Here.
Mister Nikala?
Here.
Mister Ruffo?
Here.
Ms. Yana Scavitch?
Here.
And Dave Benner informed me that he would not be here. Um, Mister Dassing?
Here.
Mister Ford? Okay, let me mark him presently absent. Mister Hayman?
Present.
Mister Pankey?
Present.
Mister Malagon?
Present.
Mister Nana?
Here.
Mister Tunyevich?
Here.
Mister Cowan?
Martin Cowan is here.
Mister Hall, I don't believe he is here. Ms. Hayes?
Here.
Mister Hurch?
Here.
Mister Hyman?
We see him.
We see you, Will. Can't hear you. I see him in chat. Um, there might be something wrong with your audio, uh.
Yep.
Mister Redpath?
Yep.
Okay, Madam Chair, uh, Mister Hegopian is absent. Um, for regionals, Mister Benner is absent and Mister Ford is absent. So Mister Cowan is sitting in for Mister Benner, but for Region Eight, both are absent.
Okay, got it. Uh, Mister Hegopian said he'd be right on. He was, he was just getting home and needed to get set up. So he'll join us shortly. Um, okay, so let's see what's next on our agenda. It's opportunity for public comment. Okay, I see Mister Donovan Pankey. Do we have any non-LNC members who want to give public comment? Because we generally give them first, first go at it. Going once, going twice. Okay, um, Mister Pankey, go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I just wanted to let everyone know that, uh, the Region Seven Chairs, uh, met uh, on Tuesday and, uh, held a subsequent vote. And I'm happy to say that Region Seven has elected Beth Vest to be the Region Seven alternate. So I believe the Madam Secretary, you'll be getting an email from Michael Paco, uh, who arranged the vote soon. I'd like to thank and, uh, welcome back onto the board, Beth Vest.
Okay, I look forward to that email from Mister Paco and I will get, get, excuse me, Ms. Vest on boarded as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Mister Pankey. Do we have any other public comments? All right, if there's none, then we're gonna jump right into business. The first um, item on our agenda is next LNC meeting date and location, and this was agendized by Mister Adrian Malagon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I just sent an updated informal tally to the business list. Excuse me. So it looks like the preference right here seems to be December second and third for Orange County, California. Uh, there were, I think, eight members, so Mister Bowen, Mister Cowan, Mister Dassy, and Mister Hegopian, Mister Hall, Mister Hyman. And Mister Watkins were the only ones that didn't reply. So I don't know if that's gonna change anything, but it does look like the preferred date is going to be the second and third. Uh, so before I make any sort of formal motion, if anyone wants to chime in, particularly those that that didn't get an opportunity to reply to the email, I think now would be the time. Uh, Mister Watkins just said he has no preference, so uh, the second and third would work for him. Would anyone else like to chime in, I, I guess, before any formal motion is made? Mister Bowen says the second and third will work for him.
I'll, I'll say that's my.
I think that would be the time. Uh, Mister Watkins just said he has no preference. Yeah, Mister Hyman has no preference either. It seems to be that, I guess, the second and third. So if there isn't gonna be any objection to that, I would just go ahead and make the motion so we can move past this item of business.
Uh, what is your motion, uh, Mister Malagon?
So my motion would be to have the next quarterly LNC meeting at the, I guess, I, I don't have the venue pulled up, but how was my report, I guess, in Orange County, California, on December second and third.
Second.
Who seconded?
Me, Madam Chair, Tunnievich.
Yeah, I had the language.
Okay, um, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on this item before we go to a vote?
Yes, Madam Chair?
Yeah, absolutely.
Did we want to put the location in the motion? Uh, Mister Malagon, your proposal is in the OneNote.
Let's pull this up. Yeah, let's grab it.
I can, yeah, I can pull it up. Let me see. Is it in?
I think it's new business with previous notice.
Yes, I can pull it.
Yep. Next LNC location, and?
So, yeah, it would be there, the Renaissance Club Sport Laguna Beach Hotel, fifty Enterprise. Uh, Aliso Viejo, I think is the actual city.
Okay. And Mister Tunnievich, are you comfortable with your second covering that location?
Uh, Mister Malagon, could you read that aloud, the location again?
Uh, yes, sorry. I was reading off your screen because I can't find it. Where is it in the OneNote? I'm not seeing it.
It's in the chat.
Oh, I'm sorry. I found it. I just found it.
Oh, I see it. Okay.
So it would be Renaissance Club Sport Laguna Beach Hotel.
And it's in Aliso, how do?
Uh, in Aliso Viejo, A.L.I.S.O., second word, V.I.E.J.O.
Okay, got it.
I purposely said it as wide as possible because I know that not everyone speaks Mexican. And yes, I did say Mexican on purpose, not Spanish, just making that clear. Uh.
Okay, so I have Mister Malagon move that the next quarterly LNC meeting be held. I think we need there, at the Renaissance Club Spot in Aliso Viejo, California, on December second, third through twenty twenty. Uh, December second through third, twenty twenty-three.
That is correct. Thank you.
Okay, do we just do a roll call vote?
I think so, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Let me duplicate the template.
Do it. Yeah, especially since we don't have everyone present.
Oh, it's, uh, Miss Eiler just pointed something out. You put club spot, not club sport.
Oh, it's sport. Okay, I missed that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is everyone ready for the vote? Mister Blankenship? Mister Bowen?
Yes.
Mister Cowan?
Yes.
Mister Dassing?
Yes.
We don't have Mister Ford yet, I believe. Mister Hegopian, has he arrived? Mister Hayman?
Um, not yet.
Mister Hayman?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Mister Malagon?
Aye.
Mister Nana? Mister Nana? I'll come back to you, Mister Nikala.
I vote aye.
Mister Pankey?
Yes.
Mister Ruffo?
Uh, yeah, sure.
Mister Tunnievich?
Yes, it's my birthday.
Ah, Ms. Yana Scavitch?
Yes.
Mister Watkins?
Maybe. Just kidding, yes.
Okay, uh, before I go to the pass to, I wanna go to Mister Nana, who I think was just getting his mic unmuted.
Yes.
Okay, and then the pass was Mister Blankenship?
Yes.
Okay, Madam Chair, it is fourteen zero zero. Do you wish to vote?
Uh, nope, Chair's not voting. The motion passes. All right, thank you, everyone. We jump back to our agenda.
Second, today is the thirtieth, right?
That is correct.
I wanna number these motions as we're doing them, so I don't forget. Okay, let me pull the notes back up. Looks like regional reports, Madam Chair.
They are. Region reports are up. We're starting with Region Two. I apologize, Region One, that we didn't have your, um, report up, but if you wanted to put a report on the public list, you are welcome to do so. Um, no pressure. I just, I just wanna make sure you feel, feel heard in some respect. Um, so let's start with Region Two, and I believe this would be Mister Cowan.
I just rely upon the written document, no statement.
Okay, uh, do we have any questions for Mister Cowan regarding Region Two? Going once, going twice. All right, if there's no questions for Region Two, we're gonna jump to Region Three, um, for Mister Nana or Mister Hurch.
Likewise, I will let the report stand for itself.
All right, any questions for Mister Nana regarding Region Three? All right, if there's no questions, we're gonna jump to Region Four. That's, uh, Mister Adrian Malagon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The report mostly speaks for itself. There is one minor update that took place during our meeting, which I'd just like to say. So, as you all know, Mister Joshua Clark resigned as a result of personal and work-related reasons. So, the LPCA Executive Committee this past Thursday, I believe it was the twenty-fourth, appointed Ms. Meredith Hayes as the new Region Four alternate she is on this call. So, uh, if you haven't welcomed her, please do. I'm very excited to be working with her.
Thank you, Mister Malagon. Okay, uh, uh, any questions? Any questions for Region Four? Okay, hearing none, let's jump to Region Five. Mister Dassing?
I'll also let the document speak for itself.
Okay, any questions for Region Five? Ooh, going once, going twice. Going through our agenda quickly. Awesome. Okay, if there's no questions, let's jump to Region Six.
Sorry, forgot about the mute. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I won't cover the material that was, uh, part of my report, but just to reiterate, Region Six is comprised of nine states, Montana, North and South Dakota, Minnesota, Iowa, Wisconsin, Illinois, South Dakota, and Utah. We, we received four, uh, submissions from states prior to the deadline for our last meeting, from Utah, North Dakota, Illinois, Wisconsin, all of those are doing great work for Liberty, and they were contained in the report I previously submitted. I do intend, on time permitting, amending that report to include this additional content that came in kind of after, after the buzzer.
No.
Somebody else speaking?
You're good, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Uh, other states have been very active. For example, during our last in-person meeting in the state of Iowa, um, they had a tremendous efforts, uh, staffing the State Fair. There are hundreds of thousands of people there. They're giving away cards and stickers and temporary tattoos. You know, over a thousand of these things per day. They had to get more. Um, and of course, as some of you are aware, uh, one of our presidential hopefuls, Chase Oliver, qualified as the first third-party, um, candidate to speak at the Des Moines Register's political soapbox. So that was really a historic thing for Iowa. South Carolina is pursuing a strategy, a media strategy, that I find particularly interesting. Um, they are driving their video content, driving in finger quotes. They've established a YouTube channel for their state LP. Their chair and vice chair are hosting an afternoon drive time show on a local talk radio show. You think they cover politics in that? I think so. They've reorganized all twelve of their counties, including officers and state delegates, and they have signed a contract to open a new online merch store. They haven't opened it yet, but they will. Uh, in terms of other regional activity, I'm, I'm proud to say we've had, uh, several good regional meetings. Uh, last quarter, for example, prior to our in-person meeting, we had a two-hour online session on fundraising best practices. Everything from, you know, what is your onboarding and intake process? Um, do you do events versus phone banks? Um, and other details on, you know, the, the grassroots fundraising that's so important for our state parties. And beyond that two hours of content, um, this past Monday, we had another two hours on the same topic, moderated by myself and with a very special guest speaker, a state chair who was very knowledgeable, and, and, and it was reasonably well-attended, which is also nice. Our next two things, and that'll wrap it up, uh, include on September eleventh, um, we will be having a, another best practice session, this one on membership renewal, strategies, best practices, exchange of information among the states, uh, with the Chair's recent distribution of, uh, lapsed members to all of our, uh, you know, to every region. Uh, this is part of our effort to kind of make that, um, uh, to make that effort to, to close those uh, expired members. And then lastly, later this quarter, I think prior to our December meeting, we will, uh, my intention is to host a, another summit, this one on the use of technology and state parties. These are open to, uh, this started off being only open to chairs, but we've really widened it up to um, uh, state central committee members and other volunteers working in the subject area. That's all for this time. Thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you, Mister Tunnievich. Does anybody have any questions for Region Six? All right, hearing none, we'll go to Region Seven.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, uh, in general, I'll just let the report speak for itself, only to highlight um, that in Arkansas, uh, they would really like to thank the LNC, all donors and volunteers that have come out for their, uh, signature petition drive to get on the ballot. Uh, the, this looks to be, uh, successful. They're very close to having all the signatures that they need, and they believe they'll be able to get them all in on the deadline that will give Arkansas ballot access for this upcoming cycle. So, uh, and the other area is in Louisiana, uh, our State Chair of Louisiana, Ms. Alahandra Smith has asked, uh, just that, uh, her camp, she's currently running a campaign for a state House district. That district that she's running for is a ballot access qualifying race. Uh, it, uh, it's a six thousand vote threshold, and, uh, uh, so very attainable for libertarian. And so any assistance that anyone, uh, on the call or any members, uh, can do to help fundraise for her to get, uh, materials out there and get out the vote for her campaign will be much appreciated.
Thank you very much, Mister Pankey. Any questions for Region Seven? Okay, if there's none, going once, going twice, no questions for Region Rep Reports. The next thing we're gonna do is we're gonna jump to committee reports.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just wanted to notify the board that, uh, Mister Ford is currently delayed. He's at a city commission meeting that he's covering. Um, he hopes to be here in the next half hour. It's run a little overtime, and he does have a report to give, so just wanted to let you know that.
Okay, thank you so much, Mister Bowen.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Also, there is Region Zero.
Oh, you're right. Sorry, Mister Watkins. Um, go right ahead, Mister Watkins.
Uh, I'll let the report speak for itself in the interest of time.
All right. Thank you very much, Mister Watkins. Does anybody have any questions for our Vice Chair? Okay, if there's none, now we're gonna go to committee reports, and we will start with APRC for Ms. Harlow's.
Uh, nothing to report that, uh, is public, you know? It's the APRC confidential. If I tell you, I'll have to kill you.
Uh, okay, well, we don't want anyone murdered, um, on a live stream. That would be terrible. So let's go to, uh, Affiliate Support Committee. Uh, Mister Ford's not on, but I believe we have, um, Jacob Bradley on to give an update. So if no one, uh, objects, we'll have Mister Bradley give an update for the committee on Mister Ford's behalf. All right, Mister Bradley, um, go right ahead.
And I believe Mister Bradley wants to show a PowerPoint, so I'm stopping my share. And you should be able to share, Mister Bradley. Let me know if you cannot.
All right, hold on. Can y'all hear me? No.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. All right, give me just a second. I'm pulling up the PowerPoint now. How about this? Can y'all go to the next committee and give me like five minutes to figure this out, because my computers have an issues? Is that an issue?
That's not an issue for me. Um, are we okay to amend the agenda to move some things around, Mister Bradley? Does anyone else mind?
Hold on, I got it.
Oh, then let me, let me stop my share then.
It's okay. We, we moved through the other reports so quickly, like, you're good.
Does everybody see this?
Yes.
Perfect. All right. I'm very impressed with myself. Okay, so I guess I'm gonna give just a quick rundown, uh, with this PowerPoint. I have kind of everything. So I guess I'm kind of gonna kick Pat out of this, not intentionally, but um, I'm just gonna kind of go over what we're doing in the Affiliate, uh, Support Committee. There is two major projects that we're working on, uh, one of them being the Affiliates', uh, Handbook, to help out the affiliates, and then the other one that we have is the, um, College Outreach. Uh, so I'm gonna go over a little bit of both of those. All the material will be here. I can answer any questions that anybody has. Uh, once, I mean, as I'm gonna, so I'll give you all some time, so feel free to just jump in. So, the first thing we do have is Affiliate Handbook, um. This is, don't pay attention to the picture, because this is just kind of, uh, what I put up. But, uh, in the book, there is officer tips. I did contact a, a state chair, a state vice chair, a state secretary, and a state treasurer, um, and talked to them about sorry, uh, talked to them about different things, uh, that they wanted to pass on. I asked them, uh, what do you know now? You, you know, then, uh, what are some stuff you still don't know? Um, and I just asked them for about seven or eight tips usually, uh, for what, uh, they would like to pass on to a new person. Uh, I have getting started, so getting started as a couple of different uh, things in it. Uh, it talks about, um, it talks about, man, wish I had this thing in front of me. Uh, I'll, I'm gonna skip to social media while I pull this up, but the social media has tips from Twitter, TikTok, uh, Facebook. And, uh, I'm sorry, guys, I should have been more prepared. Uh, a really cool thing that the social media one does have is a Twitter bot. It walks step by step through how to set up a Twitter bot, so what you can do is you can put together a, uh, a collection of different evergreen posts that will be good, no matter when you post them, quotes, libertarian principles, things like that. And, uh, it will randomly, twice a day, pick something off that list and post it for you. So even if you are not able, as the state person who does their social media, to post on Twitter twice a day, three times a day, I think it'll go up to four, it'll post for you on Twitter, so you'll always have people who are, uh, able to, you know, keep people interacting with the, uh, state page, even if you don't have the time personally, because I know a lot of us have, um, are short on time, so it was really helpful. Uh, templates, I have officer template, or, uh, meeting templates, so you can keep up with your business meetings, um. I have, uh, a sign-in sheet. Okay, sorry, I got it pulled up now, so I can, I can go through this. Uh, there's, uh, party branding.
Pause for one second. Just pause for one second.
Yeah.
We're, uh, we're almost at time on this agenda item. Would anybody like to move to extend time, so Mister Bradley can finish his, uh, presentation?
How much more time do you need, Mister Bradley?
Uh, now that I have it up, maybe five, ten minutes tops.
How about another five?
That works.
I'll move to extend time by five minutes.
Oh, okay.
Who was that, please? That was Mister Watkins?
Uh, Mister Malagon.
Oh, Mister, okay.
How dare you confuse me with Mister Watkins? He is out of hand.
Um. Fine, then, one second. No, just a second.
Okay, okay, it's been moved and seconded to extend time by five minutes. Uh, do you have any objections? Going once, going twice. Okay, hearing no objections. Time has been extended by five minutes.
Okay, uh, party branding aids. So it'll have different branding aids. You can click on the QR codes for them. It does have QR codes. It'll take you straight to those. Uh, some of that stuff is our current branding, some of it is not current branding. It's, it's current branding, but just different templates. Uh, uh, so that will be all that's in templates. Another really good one that we have is campaigning. So the last part is campaigning. It has both a template for a door hanger and a handout for candidates where they can just plug in their face and give a couple of things, but it's already branded with our stuff. Uh, there is four pages on petitioning, how to collect signatures, whether it's for ballot access or to get something on, uh, up for a vote. Uh, running for a local office, that'll be your city council, your mayor, more or less unaffiliated offices, so anything that's not a R D or an L, so that'll be in there. Then I have one for running for state and county legislative office, so your state council, your, uh, state, uh, Congress and Ha- or the House and the Senate, uh, you're looking at railroad commissioner in some states, governor, lieutenant governor, that kind of thing. Um, that is basically everything from here. Uh, I did have a couple of cool things. It's seventy-seven total pages. Uh, I went over that, a bunch of the rest of this, um. The two people who did write the, uh, stuff that were candidates to have run multiple elections and why they did, while they didn't win, they did make strides in going from fifteen percent to twenty-five percent to, uh, close to thirty. I think one of them got thirty-five percent. Uh, they were, I, I reached out to the people I knew here in Texas for this because I knew how well of a campaign they ran. Um, the Twitter bot, uh, how to fundraise, there is, I think, seven pages, six or seven pages on fundraising. Uh, not everybody is comfortable with asking for money or knows how to ask for money, so I wanted to put that in there. And then you have the candidate resources at the end that I talked about. Sorry, I'm trying to rush this, so I'll give you all time for questions. Uh, the College Affiliate Program is the next one that we have. This is with, uh, working with Teddy, uh, for the Young Libertarian Caucus, I believe is what it's called. Hold on, it's on this next page. Um, the Libertarian Youth Caucus. Uh, the current chair is Theodore Birkin. Uh, Lenaya Gabbard set up a, uh, chapter at the University of Central Arkansas. It is currently the largest chapter uh, within the Libertarian Youth Caucus. It has about fifteen people. Uh, the Libertarian Youth Caucus was going well. Covid hit, everything shut down. It kind of fell apart, so it is building back up very i- i- it's been successful, I would say, based off of it came from next to nothing. Um, they have on here, Hendrix University will be, uh, started in two weeks. Uh, probably about a week and a half now, I think this couple of days ago, and then they're hoping to have ten chapters uh, across the country, ten new chapters, uh, by the end of the year. And that is what I have. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Mister Bradley. Uh, any questions for Mister Bradley on the Affiliate Handbook? Any questions? Oh, yes, Mister Hayman.
Yeah, hi. Is this resource available right now? And if so, where do they get it?
Um, that would be an Angela question. It is. Um, that would be an Angela question. It is pretty much complete. Uh, there is one or two things I do need to uh tweak, but that would be a, that would be an Angela question on when it is gonna be released.
We're sending it out uh within the next week, I believe, in an email campaign. So the question is almost, or the answer is almost. Uh, we're also looking at how to get it up on Amazon for um maybe a, a small fee as an, as an ebook, and that'll come later, but I thought that would be a, a pretty cool project for, for us to have an Amazon presence. Any other questions? Go in once, go in twice. All right, well, thank you so much, uh, Mr. Bradley. This was a ton of work. I know it was. I, I worked with you on it a little bit, so I really appreciate it. Uh, we'll get it out and make it available to everyone ASAP. And um, yeah, thanks for joining us.
Thank you for having me.
All right, so let's jump to our next agenda item, which is the audit committee.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um we, I did submit a report. Um, it has, some of the information has changed, so I'll just update everybody. Uh, the independent financial audit is completed for twenty-twenty-two. Uh, it is in draft form, was delivered to the chair, the treasurer and the audit committee uh the day before our quarterly meeting. Um, they, it did result in an unqualified opinion, uh, which means it's uh, that independent auditor has judged a company's financial statements to be fair and appropriately represented. That is the highest uh um proof that an auditor can give. And I believe the final report will be available shortly. I know there were some signatures and the chair and, and treasurer can maybe uh, fill me in if that's been done. I have not seen the final report released from the auditor as of yet, but when it is, it will be released uh, for uh, the committees and, and public view. Um, so that is all I have at this time. I'll take any questions or have Angela or Todd uh fill in any of the blanks.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Uh, the treasurer and I did both sign off on it.
Okay, so then it's a matter of we're just waiting for Mark, our, our auditor, to actually provide us with a copy that is no longer mark draft and is a final audit report to be uh submitted uh for public view.
I believe so.
Yep, okay.
Okay, uh, any questions for Mr. Bowen? And like he said, that document will be shared um as soon as we get it.
Uh, Madam Chair, is my screen visible? My Zoom controls are kind of
It is.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Madam Chair, a quick question for Mr. Bowen, if I may.
Yes.
Thank you. Rich, um, is there any management response and will that be uh available along with the principal's uh report?
That will, that will be available with the report, yes.
Great, thank you.
Right. There's no other questions. We're gonna move on to the awards committee.
I guess I can speak. Uh, there's not really much to say. Dr. Lark um was elected the chair several months ago. Uh, and we just kind of met as a committee, just to kind of get to know each other a little bit and, and um Dr. Lark gave us kind of a rundown of how things have gone in the past, and we'll probably be meeting again. I don't know, probably, I forget when he said, probably within the next month or two, would you say, Mr. Tunyevich?
Yeah, I was gonna say, serving on that committee, uh, uh, Jim had said that he planned on having us convene for the first time uh this month in August, and obviously that has not happened, so between Andrew and myself, we can get with him and kind of get the ball started. We still have plenty of time.
But yeah, that's it.
All right. Um, are there any questions? Here comes Mr. Ford, Madam Secretary. Um, are there any questions for the awards committee? Okay, if there's no questions, let's jump to ballot access committee uh, by Mr. Nana. This, this report is slotted for a little bit longer on the agenda, everyone, so just FYI.
Ready for me?
Oh, yeah.
All right, so it's gonna be most helpful if you guys can follow along with the report from the OneNote. Uh, I'm on my phone, so sharing my screen is gonna be a little awkward. I could attempt it if you guys want me to, but I think it's gonna be.
I'll pull up the ballot access committee report on the OneNote and try to scroll to where you're at, Mr. Nana.
Awesome, you're awesome. Thank you so much. I'll let you get down to, pass the first page there. You can, if you wanna start in potential budget requests, thank you. So uh, right here we have, and then this is carried forward from the last report uh with some tweaks. Uh, right here, what you'll see is the potential budget requests, uh, what the L N C uh will potentially be spending. Um, if we have to go one hundred percent for the drives uh, listed here in the states that we don't currently have access, um, and then in the notes field, you can see what it takes to retain or how many signatures we need, et cetera. Um, so I won't go down each one of these. You guys can go through it and ask questions if you need to. Um, the things that are listed in green there are states that we have already completed, uh, the paid portion of the drive are currently um undergoing a drive or may conduct a drive in the near future. States in the red are extremely cost prohibitive or where we do not anticipate needing to assist, so um, it's not necessarily that we aren't gonna do drives here. It's just that it's gonna take a, a different sort of lift and or we just don't expect to have to do it at all because we've been told hey, the state's always done it themselves before. We're not gonna need help. Um, so if you wanna scroll down to the overview section. Uh, so states right now without access at this time are Alabama, Arkansas, DC, Illinois, Kentucky, Maine, Massachusetts, Minnesota, New Hampshire, New Jersey, New Mexico, New York, North Dakota, Ohio, Pennsylvania, Rhode Island, Tennessee, Virginia and Washington. Uh, so the committee has now met nine times, not eight times, since this report um, since the last report was given. Um, and so Arkansas, since the last time uh you guys heard from us on them, we uh of course allocated twenty-one thousand dollars to them in three separate installments uh with the state matching those funds. All of those payments have been made and the state party has also put in their portion. Uh, they have, it's actually over twelve thousand uh raw signatures, I believe, in hand right now. Um, and are planning to finish the drive with volunteers. I'm not sure why there's a space here, but um, if we need to and I don't know, Madam Chair or Madam Secretary, I think you, thank you, over over scrolled your password on that.
Okay, sorry?
I'm under a summary of updates.
Uh, oh, so right here?
Yep.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And I don't know why, I don't know why there's a space here. Anyway, um, so like I said, they have over twelve thousand signatures. They don't anticipate needing to come back to us for cash, but if they do, uh, we will of course be ready to help them out. Uh, but this drive right now, the paid portion is done and we are well on our way uh to getting ballot access in Arkansas. Now, you can kind of ignore what it says for Maine here because since this report, I've actually had a chance to meet with the Maine Chair, Vice Chair, Pat Ford, the Region A Representative, uh, and our very own Luke Troxel um, on what's going on there, and I will be briefing the ballot access committee. This meeting literally just happened. I think it was last night, maybe the night before. Uh, anyway, uh, so they have um a little over two thousands of registrations right now. They need to get to five thousand. Um, they've raised thirty-two thousand dollars, I believe they said. Uh, they're gonna raise more money. They're gonna be asking the national party for approximately sixty-five hundred dollars. I think we should probably allocate a little bit more. That's something we can talk about as ballot access committee and then report uh to the executive committee for approval. Uh, but it looks like we're, we're gonna be making a plan there to close out that registration drive. So very excited to hear that, because that's a, that's a change of, of plan since the last one time we talked to Maine. Uh, moving on to New Mexico, uh, the committee anticipates we're gonna need to do a drive here based on how the Secretary of State uh, treated the line in regards toward newly formed affiliate. Um, this drive is uh not gonna be super costly, and I'm pretty confident we can wrap it up pretty quick whenever we do decide to start. Um, we need to interface with the affiliate to determine, you know, their level of support and realistically what we expect from them. I think we've kind of already discussed that. Uh, they're relatively new and that we should assume that uh we're probably gonna be running this one ourselves. It's a little over thirty-five hundred signatures, so um, that's probably the next place we're going after the state I'm about to talk about, which is North Dakota. North Dakota is currently underway. The committee recommended we allocate seventeen thousand five hundred dollars to the affiliate in five installments. And then subsequently, the executive committee of this body approved that. Uh, the man of the uh North Dakota party committed to match this and or put more in. I think they have around twenty thousand dollars in the bank. Uh, the volunteer effort right there, right now there is unfortunately pretty minimal. Uh, but the state is committed to making things work and we have um at least one petitioner uh, that is known to the national party and Andy Jacobs working up there currently, and I believe he has somebody working with him as well. Last I heard, on the last ballot access committee meeting on the twenty-second, we had approximately two thousand-ish signatures there right now, so we're getting close to the point where we're probably due to make a payout to them, but that's something we will stay on top of internally. Uh, moving on to Ohio, the Ohio party currently has a petition and the drive had, has just started um, a few weeks back. Mr. Redpath came to Ohio during our August special election and collected three hundred and fifty signatures. Andrew Chatterton of LPMI and one of the vice chairs up there, um, and a few members from Ohio on short notice worked that um, worked that election as well. So we have maybe probably now a bit over five hundred raw signatures. We have until August of next year to finish this drive, um, but there seems to be a desire from um, the ballot access committee to kind of wrap this up quicker to avoid adding to a petitioning rush that we know is probably going to take place next year, so uh, we will see if we can squeeze this one in or if we have to do it in the, you know, in the early spring next year. It does get cold in Ohio during the winter months. Um, we do, we need five thousand signatures here. This is just to get on um as an independent for our candidate, so um, we will stay on top of that, but there is a petition in Ohio and a desire to see it get done soon. Uh, Tennessee, uh, the L N C approved our recommendation of four thousand dollars towards ballot access lawsuit with the state matching those funds. State's on board with it. Mr. Linger is the attorney we're working with. Um, we're kind of uh waiting to see what the next steps here are. Um, I don't think that the lawsuit has been filed as of today. Um, but we're working towards that. I believe the Tennessee party, and I need to follow up with Mr. Darnell, their vice chair, had a meeting about this sometime between when this report was finalized and today. Or maybe that meeting is, is upcoming very soon. I'll follow up with him and get you guys some updates on that, but uh we're still very confident in this case and uh it's a very low um, a very low investment for the game we could possibly get, not only in Tennessee, but the rest of the Sixth Circuit, including Ohio that has um, some terrible ballot access laws. Um, so the next ballot access committee meeting is not scheduled for the twenty-second because we are past that now. It is scheduled for um not, so it's this coming Tuesday, so whatever, whatever day that is, I don't have my calendar port up in front of me, but that'll be the next ballot access committee meeting. And then if you scroll down just a little bit, uh, I'm not gonna go through all of this. You guys can view this at your own leisure. This is uh, I, I can, and sorry that it looks kind of weird. This is actually a Google Doc that I like had to rip and turn into an image to get it to fit into my report, but we made a, a, a Google Doc of all of the states, all the fifty states plus DC, um, and focused on the ones that we don't currently have access in. And collected things like, you know, are they already on the ballot? Do they have what's called candidate substitution, which means can we start petitioning with uh, a placeholder's name for president and vice president and then substitute our real nominee in after the convention when that is known? What the first day to start that petition is, if there is one, when the petitions are due, what the deadline is, how many signatures we need, uh, special rules uh that might apply here or uh, just, you know, which kind of petition we're talking about when it comes to that state. Uh, there's a link to documents that backs up all that information that's in uh, in short text here on all of these, and then um, whether or not voters can sign only one petition, et cetera, and then there's like a special notes field if any state had like specific um, things that didn't really fit in one of these columns. Um, so like I said, I'm not gonna go through the whole document, um, but that is there if you want to go over it or if you have any questions. So if you wanna scroll all the way down past that, I think that's the end of the report is.
That was the end, yes.
Yep, so I am happy to take any questions.
Yeah, let me start with a couple and then let's go down the line. Do we know when the, when the ending of the main registration drive is? Is it the end of the year?
Yes, it is. It is December thirty-first.
Okay, great. Um, we have sent out text message reminders to all of our main members to donate, so we are doing that. Um, and I'm happy to do that for other ballot access drives as well. Just get with me on it. And then North Dakota, can you get with me offline about making the, the first payment? Because I don't wanna be holding it up.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And I, and I don't, they haven't like come asking for it, so I think we're okay, but yeah, absolutely, I will.
Okay.
I'll get with you about it.
I just wanna make sure I'm right on top of that. Um, that, that's it for questions for me, so let's go um to Mr. Redpath.
Yes, uh, I would like to, uh, I'll give an update on Tennessee. I just spoke with Jim Linger couple of days ago. Um, as soon as he gets his five thousand, he's got twenty-five thousand dollars that he's received. Uh, the other twenty-five hundred uh has been sent by the L N C to Tennessee. Tennessee will be sending that or needs to send that to him, and then he will have his full five thousand dollar retainer. They, they have local council in Tennessee. They'll be good to go then. Um, I would like to just present a, a sort of um uh, more digestible um, plan here, so to speak, in terms of chronology. Uh, for the states, I'm not, I'm not addressing New Mexico and, and Massachusetts here. Uh, that they weren't on my list when I prepared this back at the DC meeting in person. But there are five states uh with two thousand or fewer valid signatures that we should call upon to do this petition drive themselves, and I, and I mean do it themselves, not we've got money, but you've got to bring people in to do it because we got a manpower uh problem, but Minnesota, New Jersey, Rhode Island, Tennessee and Washington should be five states that should be able to complete this on their own completely. Uh, that's again two thousand or fewer valid sigs. In twenty-twenty-three, we, Arkansas is about done. We've got Ohio, uh, well, North Dakota is ongoing. Ohio, we can do in twenty-twenty-three. We could theoretically complete it. Kentucky can start in twenty-twenty-three. I believe in early November, Kentucky can start. Uh, then we go into twenty-twenty-four, pre Memorial Day. There are four that can start. Virginia on January two, Pennsylvania in February, Illinois is late March, and New York is going to be mid to late April, six weeks before Memorial Day, I believe is when the New York drive starts, and then we go to post Memorial Day because of substitution not being allowed. Uh, so we would have to do Alabama and DC. I don't believe substitution is allowed in DC. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Nana. Uh, but um, we would have to do DC post Memorial Day. We would have to do Maine post Memorial Day if the registration drive does not succeed. That's four thousand valid sigs. And New Hampshire would be post Memorial Day. That's three thousand valid sigs. So that's how it lies out or lays out chronologically and um separating the volunteer states from states that are going to need help from us. Uh, and I did not address Massachusetts or New Mexico there.
Yep, correct on all accounts.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Redpath. Um, let's jump to Mr. Tunyevich.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just very briefly, in Mr. Nana's remarks, he mentioned that Mr. Redpath indeed traveled to the great state of Ohio and collected uh three hundred and fifty signatures personally, which in itself is, is quite admirable, and I applaud him for it. What he didn't mention is he did it, if I'm not mistaken, all in one day, which just goes to show uh what a pro he is. So from the credit, where credit is due department, hats off to Mr. Redpath uh, for all of his good works. We're lucky to have him here.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you.
Ohio was very thankful.
All right, any other questions regarding ballot access? Go in once, go in twice. Go in once, go in twice. Okay, if there's no other questions for our ballot access committee, we are going to jump to the next item in our agenda, which is candidate support committee. Um, who is going to do candidate support committee for us?
Madam Chair, uh, I can just briefly say that we submitted a report and it stands as as written.
Great. Any questions for Mr. Blankenship? Go in once, go in twice. All right, I guess there's none. Um, I will say that we have entered into a contract with voter gravity, so we are going to be offering some more candidate support services very soon. Okay, let's jump to the next one. That's convention oversight committee with Mr. Bowen. Um, go right ahead.
Hey, thank you, Madam Chair. I submitted a report for our DC meeting. Uh, obviously, there are a few updates. Uh, since that time, I think we had a very successful meeting uh, at the DC Hilton at the venue back uh, in August nineteenth and twentieth. Um, at that meeting, uh, we actually elected two new members to the committee, uh, one LNC member, um, Adrian and one non-LNC member, uh, Robert Kraus. So we have um, filled the vacancies on the committee. Uh, in addition, we also voted, as most of you know, to select Grand Rapids as the venue for the twenty twenty-six convention. And we are in what is called the um, contract review uh, portion of the process. Um, I will ask at this time, I don't, I have not gotten a contract over to Mr. Hall. I don't know if Angela, if you have at this point. Um, if not, we can get that over to him, you know, in the next uh, next day or two.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, that's, that's the portion that we'll need to uh, to take care of. Um, we are meeting every other week, every other Wednesday at nine PM. Actually, tonight was supposed to be the next meeting, but because of this meeting, we did postpone it. So the next meeting will be uh, the Wednesday, the thirteenth of September at nine PM. And um, let's see, what else? Uh, we will be adding to the website shortly, um, the remaining registration package uh, um, purchases, uh, vendor table registrations. Um, and after that, we'll be getting some information up on speaker events and those ticket purchases. So I know an email just went out where another asked for the presidential package. Um, and uh, I know Luke and I are working uh, hand in hand of getting things up on the website every couple of weeks, every few days, get something new up there and follow up with an email to the general membership to keep it fresh in their minds. Um, so with that, um, I will open it up to uh, any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Bowen at all about our convention? We did a big walkthrough this weekend. If you got any questions, now's a good time, especially if you weren't there in person.
Yeah, we did have a walkthrough. I think one of the nice, one of the nicest features is there is a lot of room for us to uh, hold our meetings, uh, to actually rent out space to any of the affiliates, caucuses, uh, presidential candidates. Um, I think that we will, um, you know, we'll have plenty of space for everyone. And um, you know, that's obviously something we'll be reaching out to, especially to the presidential campaign shortly, to see what their needs are and get them set up uh, for their apparatus.
Uh, Mr. Pankey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, uh, Mr. Vaughn, I was just uh, curious is what is your targeted uh, date for having all of the packages and vendor stuff? Like everything buttoned up that if I was to present a summary of everything that was going to be done in DC uh, to members that I could get that out to them and not just piecemeal?
Uh, I would hope that, we're hoping that we can get that out by the end of September. And then the process would be, we will have early bird pricing for October, November, and December. Uh, I'm hoping that we'll have an aggressive um, advertising campaign for that fact, so that the last three months of the uh, year uh, will bring in a fair amount of revenue. Um, I know a lot of people like to take advantage of the early bird special. Uh, we're going to offer that uh, through the end of the year. And then uh, regular pricing starting January first, right up until the date of the convention.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Bowen? If not, we will jump to our next agenda item, which is EPCC.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, EPCC has been busy working with the chair on matters ranging from staff and compliance and uh, all sorts of things. Um, we recently hooked up with Paychex. There are new HR and Paychex providers. We're very happy working with them. A very knowledgeable group of folks, so I'm excited to uh, get us to use their resources and and advice and things like that and just make sure overall we streamline our uh, onboarding processes and things of that nature. Uh, we're going to be working on the employment manual a bit more and some other things and uh, supporting documents for staff and for for management. Um, and assist in any way we can. Uh, you guys might have seen the Employment Policy and Conversation Committee's master policy, which is live on LP.org. I believe it's under committees, which just outlined some of the things that um, we've worked on in the past few months to help streamline the uh, staff uh, uh, processes and 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 management policies and things of that nature. Um, other than that, that's pretty much where we're at. Unless there's any questions, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Nikela. Any questions? Okay, if there's no questions, we're going to jump to the next agenda item, which is historical preservation um, with Ms. Harlowes.
Uh, yes, mostly we'll just stand on the report. Um, just one thing to to highlight from the report. Uh, for those of you who are into this kind of super geeky stuff, we we did get digitized the remainder of the nineteen seventies two-inch broadcast reels. Um, there's really very few vendors that do the type of reels that we had. So um, it's kind of specialized work. We're going to be getting that up on LPD soon. So we've got some McBride here on some some discs, so I'm super, super excited about that. So the oldest of the type of media that deteriorates has been digitized. So everything from the seventies that's in that kind of deteriorating media has been digitized and preserved. We we haven't yet gotten back one, which is just amazing that said it was too far gone. Um, considering how old they are, um, things I think were just made better then because some of the VHSs aren't in quite so good of condition, even though they're, they're, they're much less old. So I just wanted to highlight that. Those uh, videos will go up on LPD and the Historical Preservation Committee's YouTube channel.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Harlowes? Go in once, go in twice. Okay, if there's no questions, we're going to jump to our next agenda item, which is Information Services Committee. Um, and Ms. Del Signore will give the report on that, as long as there's no objection from the LNC. Hearing none. Take it away, Ms. Del Signore.
All right, hello. Um, so we, I'll just keep this brief. So we've been working on a few main things. So the first one is the migration from Microsoft, uh, from Google to Microsoft three sixty-five. That I should have that done probably not by next week, but the week after, so in two weeks at the latest. Um, that's kind of been my pet project for a while. Uh, we're, we've also made some infrastructure um, improvements. I mean, we do have um, a colo at a data center, I believe in Texas somewhere. And that's probably I was the one that set that up. Um, and we've also got, uh, sorry, hold on a sec. We've also got better data mapping, believe it is, and yeah, robust capability mapping. So that's been mostly the efforts of myself, uh, Eric and Donovan Pankey. Um, I've opened any questions because that's pretty much it.
Any questions for IS committee? Going once, going twice. All right. Well, thank you, Ms. Del Signore. I appreciate all the work you guys have been doing. Um, I know that it's a lot of work and that it's not particularly outward facing, but I do hear about it and I I appreciate it a lot.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
You are so welcome. Okay, let's jump to our next agenda item. That concludes our committee reports.
Madam Chair?
Oh, yes.
Since Mr. Ford is here, did we wish to go back to Region Eight report?
Yes, we do.
But I will ask Mr. Ford if he's plans on giving a report that I do need it in writing as well. I don't have a report in writing.
Uh, Madam Secretary, I do have it in writing and I will forward it to you immediately after the meeting. Give me just one moment. I will switch over screens on my phone. Uh, forgive me, folks, uh, for being late. I got stuck at a city council meeting. Uh, also, I want to note that uh, I want to congratulate Mr. Bradley and uh, on the, on his work in rescuing, if you will, uh, the affiliate in a box. Uh, it was a difficult situation with some internal personnel. That's been resolved and he grabbed that reins of that and moved forward with the committee. A great deal of leadership and I thank you for that. Uh, bear with me a second here, uh, and I will give you, I'll talk and upload at the same time. So first of all, a particular note with the state of Massachusetts, uh, Janel Holmes, who most of us might have met at the uh, at Reno and has been an activist with Libertarian Party of Worcester, filed for uh, a special election for the Massachusetts Senate. Uh, it appears like it might be a one-on-one if in fact her signatures are accepted. We got three hundred and seventy-something and need for three hundred uh, in a very compressed period of time. And we had, uh, including myself, about seven volunteers out there this past weekend uh, petitioning. So congratulations to her. Regardless of that, she has set up the beginnings of, I think, a formidable operation uh, as a special election. That office will be again in contention next year. Um, New Hampshire, the Defense Guard phone banking held with volunteer calling reps around the country. Sites at Pork Fest holding libertarian presidential roundtables and outreach. One of my favorites, a police service revolver buyback, offering gift cards and donuts, but unfortunately, perhaps predictably, no police officers took advantage. Membership is up ten percent from spring. Vermont, an amazing success story. Uh, now, first of all, the coalition has been formed with the Vermont Peace Anti-War Coalition. Uh, they have their own Rage Against the War Machine Satellite Event in Montpelier. Uh, robust support from grassroots around the state. It's an embodiment of what can happen with a single uh, issue coalitions. They're focusing currently on F thirty-five fighter jets currently stationed in residential areas in South Burlington. Um, addition of, again, this being the Center of Liberty, Representative Jared Sammis, Rutland, third district, who is now a libertarian state representative. He will be uh, sponsoring the Defense Guard Build in the Vermont State Legislature um, in conjunction with the anti-war movement there. Uh, notably, uh, again, uh, Chairman of the State of Vermont, uh, Ms. Mardoch de Clerc uh, has been working with me and we engage in a significant mutual aid effort uh, in conjunction with something called the Johnson Health Center, as well as local relief agencies. Uh, we've made three trips. We'll make our fourth trip up with a vanload of materials this weekend in turn for a benefit concert that uh, she has arranged called Liberty Stock uh, in LibertyStock.org. So it's uh, partnering with members of the community to advocate towards liberty. Um, a number of social events, uh, Zuby made an appearance in Vermont and hosted some libertarian types and liberty types recently. Libertarian Party of Maine. Wow, okay, again, legislative success, as you've heard about. Uh, actually conceiving, supporting, testifying, and acting, and ultimately signed by the governor of the state of Maine. Uh, Dustin Nana made a significant conversation towards that. New York, uh, their lawsuit is pending review by the Supreme Court. Conference is scheduled for September twenty-sixth. I'm awaiting word from that. Uh, they've got nineteen candidates ready for local office through the state. Um, they've got some type of in-person convention-style event coming up on November twenty-third. I'll give you details on that and they're looking forward to hosting a presidential debate. They also have a fundraising campaign going on. We've shared it extensively uh, toward, if you have the uptick, towards significant infrastructure improvements in the party. Uh, New York, as we're well aware, is taking a long view and has decided to really uh, focus on party building for the next few years. Rhode Island, wrapping it up almost there, folks. Maj Tor, all right, was a expert witness in front of the Rhode Island House of Representatives on what's commonly called gun night, where he was uh, given his status and my work and our work in coalition with the Rhode Island Republican Party, we're able to actually put him at the head and gave him unlimited time for testimony, and it was stellar. Uh, twenty-two minutes of pure liberty in arguably one of the most bluest states in the nation, coordinated with two appearances on local television, which headlined that night, as well as an hour on our state's biggest talk radio station. Um, also, uh, sponsored an Earth Day cleanup, the Libertarian Party of Rhode Island has adopted a uh, highway portion that they're taking care of. Uh, and this year, for the first time, uh, and I had the opportunity to testify this at this, the Defense Guard legislation was actually heard formally in the Rhode Island State House. Uh, New Jersey, uh, I happened to spend time on Sunday, after spending time in Massachusetts on Saturday, uh, with them at their uh, their their, if you will, biannual meeting. Uh, a whole lot of issues were were addressed, but again, focusing on party infrastructure. We're looking at uh, voter, the acquisition of voter data. That was, that was a major part of the issue. Uh, the, if you will, the appointment of a new vice chair. Uh, so great prospects in New Jersey. Multiple candidates are going to be running in twenty-three and twenty-four that have already announced, uh, including a sheriff candidate who initially petitioned as part of the Libertarian Party, the state through the, well, it's New Jersey. He's running. So we're looking to get behind multiple candidates. We're going to have a total of a half a dozen candidates. Also, Defense Guard uh, is going to be brought up in the New Jersey Legislature as well. And that, if you will, is a summary of an extensive report that I will be submitting to Madam Secretary. Anyone have any questions about, again, the Center of Liberty, Region Eight?
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any, oh, yep, Mr. Maladon, go right ahead.
Uh, I just have a quick question. Uh, what kind of donuts were offered to the police officers? Years of extensive research watching The Simpsons suggests that jelly filled is the way to go. So perhaps if that wasn't on the table, that could have affected the buyback. I'm just throwing that out there.
Well, amongst a number of the native, uh, if you will, gourmet items in New England is something called cider donuts. And uh, uh, Mr. Maladon, if you're free this weekend, come up to Liberty Stock in uh, Cabin Vermont, and the cider donuts are on me.
Awesome. All right.
Someday, someday.
Very much. Questions, we're going to jump to our next um, agenda item. Madam Secretary?
You are freezing a bit, Madam Chair.
Bond next, followed by um, the contract motion. And there were both. Oh, I want to say to everyone else that there.
Is the chair freezing for everyone or just me?
Yeah. Yes, indeed. It's pretty bad.
Yeah.
Yeah, she's cutting in and out for me. Am I?
It's still bad, Madam Chair.
Okay, a couple of seconds.
Yeah.
While I join from my phone.
Yeah.
So I guess we'll just stand at ease until she returns?
I'm, oh, and Todd Hagopian had dropped out too.
There she is.
Now, that, that was Todd, I believe.
Well, it looks like Angela's back. Unless it's some kind of glitch.
She never dropped off. She said she was going to join on her phone, so.
And Madam Secretary, was Mr. Hagopian joined earlier?
Yes, he, every, everyone. Had Angela's coming back in.
Move to my phone.
There we go.
Okay, do we have feedback?
Sounds good to me.
Okay, great. Okay, so, uh, I apologize for that. What I was just saying is that we're gonna end up going into executive session to discuss both of the following agenda items. But there's also some information for the public on each agenda item on the list. Um, I apologize, it's not like very, like, it's not necessarily in one place. But you can find information on the contract that we're gonna discuss and you can also find information on some updates on the Michigan lawsuit. If you, um, as a member of the party or the public, just want to take a look at that. Now, for, for the other two items, for the LNC, how do we want to do this? Do we want to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss both at the same time? And come out and do, um, two votes? What, does anyone have a preference before I make a motion?
I would prefer that I was gonna suggest something similar, just for the sake of time.
Okay. Anybody else?
That is also what I prefer, um, Madam Chair. And there was also the concern that I had texted you a few moments ago regarding needing NDAs from anyone in executive session.
Yes, um, so this is really, uh, an update. There's a couple of you that we've already sorted this out with. So I'm not referring to members that we've already had conversations with this about. But if you're new to the LNC, um, we need you to sign NDA. If you have not done so, please, uh, let us know because we need that to go into executive session to discuss our legal, legal issues.
I do have NDAs from Mr. Hayman and Ms. Hayes.
So who's left, I guess, is the question.
I'm looking right now. I believe that leaves Beth Vest.
I should have one on file from my last service, but I can do another one.
Yeah, uh, Madam Chair, um, I don't have access to ones, uh, from, from the past. So, um, since you had charged me with, with keeping the ones for, for this term, I, I don't have one from the past.
Okay, so do we want to get Ms. Vest one ASAP? Perhaps have her monitor the group chat and have her regional fill her in as soon as we're done?
How long is it gonna take? Can we conceivably just do it before we jump in?
Um, that is a question for Ms. Harlowes.
It's done through Adobe eSign. Adobe hasn't been rapid lately. So even if I send it right now, that doesn't mean that I, it's going to be received immediately. I don't know what the issue has been with Adobe the past week. Um, but like, there's been issues. I could send it right now and we could get it back within a few moments. Or it could show up and miss, miss that, I'm sorry. My list, Ms. Vest's email later this evening, which has been my experience this week with Adobe eSign.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. The last, the last time that this came up, there were two of us. I, myself was one. Um, in my case, I was unaware that there wasn't a current NDA on file and you emailed me a copy of the blank document. I signed it, PDF'd it, sent it right back to you and was able to participate. We also had another member, an alternate, but now who I believe is currently sitting as, uh, the primary, uh, who has not, um, uh, signed the NDA. And I'm, I'm curious if you're, you're, you're wanting to go there as well. I refer to Mr. Cowan.
He worked out something separately with me regarding attorney-client privilege. So.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I'm looking right now to see if I can pull something up in my email.
I have the blank form on my desktop, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Would it be appropriate to make a motion real quick?
Okay.
Uh, I move that we, uh, take a five-minute recess to sort this stuff out.
Okay. Do we have a second?
A second then.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, take a five-minute recess. Um, during that time, the secretary and I are gonna see what we can do for the NDA situation. Any objection? Going once, going twice.
I won't object, but I'll say that if we can't solve this within five minutes, I think we should just go with the, the option of having her regional representative fill her in after the fact because I don't want to take up too much time. We do, these items will take up a fair amount of time and.
If I agree with you, Mr. Malagon, I think we can move forward. Yeah, five minutes is all I'm asking for, I totally agree.
Yeah, five minutes is fair, so that's fine.
Myth that, I so apologize. Ms. Vest could either, um, private message me on Zoom, an email address, or if she doesn't mind it being on the public chat, either private or public chat, for me to send the Adobe eSign document over?
Okay, um, we're gonna stand at ease. Sorry, we're gonna stand at ease, uh, or we're gonna be at recess starting now, since there's no objection at 8:20. Sorry, go ahead.
All right, that's my public email address.
Okay, let me. I've got the document loaded up into Adobe. I've just gotta do the, you know, where it tells you where the fields are. So give me one moment. Hopefully Adobe won't give me fits. Okay.
We have regional rep is here, so I'm fine with that. If you could just send it and we can resolve it, that's okay. I'm okay either way, really.
Okay, just one moment, I'll let you know when it's sent. But if you don't get it right away, it's been, it's been a problem with eSign this week. Hopefully they have it resolved because.
Email address, scroll down.
It should be on its way to you.
All right.
Um, Madam Chair, while we're in this five-minute recess, I'm going to use the bathroom really quickly.
Yep, that's a great time for everyone to do that.
Madam Chair, um, it has been signed and sent.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I am back, uh.
Just let us know if you.
Signed and sent, yeah, it's been signed and sent.
Yep, I have it in my inbox.
Awesome, that was quick.
Good, Adobe's problems have been resolved. It was really bad for a bit. Madam Chair, I've already promoted Ms. Eiler to co-host if she consents to moderate the open room?
We are officially back from our recess. Um, Ms. Eiler, I hate to signal you, call you out like that. Um, are you open to co-hosting? Or moderating? I'm so sorry.
Yes, that would be fine.
Okay, you're the best, thank you.
And I think you already are co-host, is that correct, Ms. Eiler?
I believe so, I started getting notifications at some point. That means you are.
Okay, would anyone like to make the motion, um, for me to go into executive session, for us to go into?
So moved.
It needs to be a bit more specific, uh, so.
I'll move to go into executive session to cover the MI legal update and, uh, the contract, pending contract on the table. Not, do it two for one.
If I may make a suggestion, Mr. Malagon, um, we have to.
Please.
Use the bylaws language, so, um, would you mind me crafting a motion?
Oh, no, please, I was gonna suggest, yeah, please, I, yeah, I forgot. It has, you have to put the legal and all the bylaws jargon, so please, by all means.
So it's a move to go into executive session to discuss pending litigation and personnel, personnel issue, issues.
Second.
Okay, sorry about that, I was muted. Um, okay, do we have any discussion or objection to our motion? Going once, going twice. Okay, hearing none, we're gonna rise into executive session. Um, Madam Secretary, do you want to instruct all the new people how to, um, jump into the group? Great.
Um, uh, for all the, the new persons, uh, if I have done everything correctly, you will all of a sudden find yourself in a new room. Zoom will automatically push you into the executive session room once I open it. But I stay in the open room for a few moments to make sure that everyone was shepherded over correctly. I will need to manually do that for Ms. Vest and probably Madam Chair, if you're still on your phone, because that will not be in the pre-selected list. So I'm going to open that room now and you guys will find yourselves flying into that room.